Yes. And she's like, let me. Try to return and see which way she can get out of it. Yeah, like also she's kind of managed it to a point where there's no.
A lot of things being done. I learned my lesson and now I will never do something. So you didn't have to complain.
Okay, I'd like to call for the board trustees meeting on Monday, June ninth. Um, twenty twenty five, first by going our own room, Mark Kissinger, President.
Sherry, the library board treasurer, Neil Sagal trustee.
Sarah Patterson, secretary.
Lisa Stewart.
Carolyn Brinkatella, co vice president.
Laura DeBetta trustee.
Michelle Walsh, co vice president.
Jeffrey Magick, one more.
Okay, the first order of business would be public participation. Do we have any sign up?
Uh, Michelle.
You can stand or sit up here. Better if you stand from the camera.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, I was one of the candidates for the trustee seat. And was a very interesting experience, to say the least. I was not surprised that I lost the seat for the library board trustee. I would have had to overcome a huge obstacle by receiving twice as many votes as my opponents. Nevertheless, I almost succeeded. It was a very close race. I am so proud of myself and my efforts and the efforts of my supporters. What I wasn't prepared for were the lies and the politicalization posted to my Facebook and other social media. The lies about my opinions regarding book bans, being called a Nazi, being attacked as a Jew. These aberrant efforts to defame me because you wanted to win unleashed unimaginably ugly ignorance and bigotry on our community. I would like to hope that a library is the last place ignorant ignorance and bigotry belong. I will be using my energies moving forward in service of educating and enlightening our community toward mutual respect, understanding, honesty and accountability. So that bigotry and ignorance will someday find no home here. Our library must be an asset to any healthy community. And I look forward to continuing my role as a local member. I'll stand here. I think this over there.
My name is Dee Levy and I'm a Bethlehem resident. I have spoken before the library board a number of times before and felt compelled to yet again speak here this night. I want to remind everyone here that every trustee is required to sign the ethics statement for library trustees, the first line of which reads, trustees in the capacity of trust upon them shall observe ethical standards with absolute truth, integrity and honor. This is especially concerning considering the behavior observed in this past library board election. I am here about the behavior and actions of one candidate in particular, Laura DeBetta. Someone who happens to be a current trustee and who engaged in tactics including spreading misleading information and statements against another candidate who is running the library board, Michelle Sanders, that contributed to vitriol and harassment against her. I just want to make sure everyone's paying attention when this.
I just wonder, just Mark, you know, our personal, like, aren't they supposed to address the entire board?
It's it's about all the trustees. I don't know. Am I supposed to get interrupted during a public statement?
Yeah, I want to continue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I find it especially concerning that this behavior targeted a Jewish candidate, which resulted in online harassment and hateful comments towards Michelle, such as, quote unquote, Nazi genocidal freaks like you are fast becoming unwelcome in our society. In a climate like the one we face today, where antisemitism rates have risen three hundred and forty-four percent in the past five years and in which we have seen propaganda lines quickly turn into violence directed at Jewish people, it is not only irresponsible and unethical, but truly horrifying that someone like the undaunted trustee member or board member who is in such a public position would use their influence and words to slander another candidate. She falsely claimed in several social media posts that Michelle was in favor of banning books, something that was untrue. She spread this lie to her social media following on several different platforms. The lie quickly spread within several mainstream circles, and not only did the original lie spread, it mutated to the point that people were saying Michelle was some kind of Nazi and against freedom of speech, both ludicrous claims, yet being widely posted on social media before the election. They say a lie makes its way around the world before the truth puts its fans on. In the last month, we witnessed two incidents of blood libel and antisemitic rhetoric result in direct violence and even murder of Jews in DC and Boulder. While we were spending time arguing about Miko Pellet here in this library, the board meetings became a platform for antisemitism. And then two days later, someone shot at Temple Israel. You're watching a classic case of blood libel, a hallmark of antisemitism, happen in real time while your board members participate. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Okay, I'm gonna move on to the the rest of the agenda. First item is review of previous meeting minutes on pages six through six. Take a second to look at those. Okay, uh, let's take a motion on the meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to improve minutes.
Second, Michelle, any discussion? Most in favor, if in fact I say aye raising your hand. Seeing the opposition that he passes. Moving on to the financial report, pages seven to fifteen.
Projecting that revenue uh will exceed the budget by roughly um a hundred and thirty thousand due in large part to additional interest earnings. Uh, of about eighty thousand and additional pilot funds received this year of thirty-eight thousand. Total expenses are about five point six percent under budget, which is well aligned with where it was last year at this time. Salaries are on budget since we're fully staffed. Although there may be some lines that are slightly overspent, this will be more than offset by lines that underspent in the budget. Um, and there's, you know, some spending that's happening this month where we're catching up with with certain purchases. So we'll see some lines look pretty underspent. But um, in the end, they won't be that far underspent. And if you want to go to the actual report. So if anybody has any questions, anything? Happy to try to address them. You know, I think we will be in good shape this year. Most likely be able to add to um the fund.
How come we have so much money on the photocopier? A hundred and fifty-one point six percent of the estimated budget.
Um, it's fees that we've received. It just happens to be, I think it was, the fees were like six thousand. It's scrolled back up to the first page.
Yeah.
It's just a hard thing.
We added.
We added another copy.
Yeah.
And that's the money that we take in from the public when they make copies in their black and white, which are ten cents color or twenty five cents.
And also printing. So it's a it's a photocopier, the printers.
Nice job.
Well, I mean.
It's it's obviously well used, right?
It was a hundred and fifty-one percent of relatively small numbers.
A small number, exactly. Yeah.
And similar to last year, so um we're a little bit above.
Yeah, last year at this point in time, we had raised about eleven thousand.
Just to point out the interest on the line, you're way over projection.
Right.
Anything?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Always a little hesitant to budget too high for interest because you never know what's going to happen as the year progresses, how interest rates will change. Um, so I've been trying to budget a pretty conservative. Rather have surplus than deficit.
Any questions for Sherry on the financial report, the treasury report? Okay, I'll take a motion on financial reading.
Shouldn't you accept the financial report as reported?
Michelle, any discussion? Those there signify by saying aye raising your hand. Uh, seeing the opposition, that motion is carried as well. Moving to the first honor report on page sixteen.
Okay, so uh in preparation for the next fiscal year, the only position that's on this whole report is the one that was previously agreed to fill last month for a librarian. And you'll notice that the held positions, which were eliminated as part of our budget process this year are. So those titles are not held as part of our budget. We're at full staff where we are. Um, and you know, if we physical circulation were to go back up, I think we could do those positions. Then we'd come back and have a discussion about how we could properly staff the library. But I don't. I don't see that. Not saying that doesn't follow the trend lines of physical circulation. Nothing to note, just something to note, no actions yet.
Okay, any questions? Moving on to the trajectory report, page seventeen to twenty-six.
All right, so no much past and more enjoyed as trustees. So thanks to everybody that chose to support. Appreciate yourself. Um, want to talk a little bit about the bed bug, the the bed bug that was found in the library?
The dead one.
Well, killed on staff, right? So. Prepping staff member. Live at one point, then shortly after that. Um, and we have uh people, everyone's asking for a pig, a picture of of Biggs the Wonder Dog. So there you go. There's what, there's Biggs. Um, came back in, we had uh, you know, we're we're all a little bit twitchy. So we found a like a dead beetle looking thing. So uh Biggs came back, sniffed everything, was not a bed bug. The the handlers are not bed bug. So um went all over the library again. So we have a completely, a complete bill of health. We don't have justice. So we'll keep um them on our shortlist. We have them come every quarter. I may tighten that up to every other month just for a little while until things settle down for us a little bit. But.
Thanks to you and the staff for handling that so well. I know that it's a it can be an alarming thing to get that message on your social media that the library is closed for bedbugs, but this was really the ideal situation of hand of handling that possibility, which is a very real possibility for libraries everywhere.
It is. I mean, this is the thing that folks um get to recognize. A lot of our training had focused on the books as a vector. So like, how do we identify as being interested in books? What is what is a bed bug look like when they're in on a book? And what are the signs to look for? Um, and of course, as we were talking to our to our folks from these pest control, it's the people, right? That's the vector. The vector is much more likely to be human than books. It's not that they can't come in on books. They certainly can. But um, but people are much more likely to factor for them. And that's, this was in an area that had nothing to do with collection. So it's just something that we will be living with. Um, you know, schools, public, any building that you allow humans into, which is essentially any building, is uh just something that we'll be managing and living. So um, I have become the local expert for now for among other libraries. So imagine we'll be talking about this a lot forward and we'll be ramping up our training just to make sure we have everybody covered to a level. Want to just, I have to thank the staff that were right on it that Sunday, got on notifying me a lot of staff so fast as it could have been a lot worse.
It flew all over social media. It was really interesting to me how most of it got picked up and it was all over telling people.
Well, that's the, I mean, I think some some folks might, some some people who are running libraries might think it's best to not put that out there, but I mean, I would want to know. And why is the library closed suddenly? Um, you know, I think it's important to just put that right out there. Up to the public, so.
And two, that we already had the process in place. The dog had just been here previously.
Yeah, this is our, I guess we're saying everything worked great, but also because of the preparation. Um, you know, yeah, we had a dog coming here. We were looking back on it. It's maybe not quite a decade, but like that amount of time. We're on our second dog, right? So before it was Gator. Uh, well, they they have to retire. There's, I don't know. It's not, right? There's a, the 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 organization that certifies these bed bug sniffing dogs, there's a mandatory retirement age for them. So so Gator was a beagle and much more, I think, what you would expect. And now we have uh, now we have Biggs who looks like a true.
It's not an excessive breed of.
No, they just have to have a good sniffer and the right temperament and he's uh, I'd never, you know, I've certainly seen the dog coming for years. I'd never seen what a hit looks like. So now that I have, I can, oh, okay, it's not a subtle bed. It's a lot of scratching. So, okay, enough of that. Is anybody as itchy as I am? We're moving on. Uh, we had to take down some trees on the property. I uh included a picture of the hollowness and the ants that were nesting in the tree. That was not awesome. Um, we had had several large branches come down on top of a picnic table and it just, when that starts to happen, like, no one got hurt, but someone could have been hurt. And that's public safety. I like trees. But when public safety is at risk, that's trumped that. So um, we did investigate putting in a like a significantly larger tree because we are going to miss the shade in that area around the circle between lots one and four. Um, so we investigated that and the price to have a tree put in, especially for a government entity with prevailing wage, is really, really expensive, not like it is a five-figure amount of money. So um, we we opted to have a pick up biggest tree that we could move and have dropped here. The guys were able to move it in with the Bobcat and have it dropped. So we have a new tree. It will be any years until it provides shade. So in the meantime, um Kevin and his crew are going to put up some posts and some fabric sales as soon as the grass gets reestablished. We'll put those fabric triangle sails back up to provide a shade in that area just because it is a, it is an awfully nice place to sit with the picnic table and and the benches out there. So it's one of the nicest places in the property to sit, so. So we'll, we'll have something that works and gets a little shade out there. Um, yeah, boiler replace a project, which would normally be occupying a lot of my time, didn't this month, but uh but it's moving along handily. So we're happy about that. Um, I'm moving the departments around a little bit. So new services gets their uh their golden moment this month or up until my report. So uh lots of great um stuff from services this month. The early literacy program is uh continuing to be well attended. That, of course, is uh has come to an end now as we prepare for summer reading program. And the shift turns from being much of our attention going on the preschool kids. Not that we don't do school age programs all year long. But during the summer, that age, the age group that we're focusing on widens out as we as we work on programs for all age kids and preschool kids and school age kids. So that's happening right now. The the librarians are doing their school visits presently. So um all the children's librarians are out doing that, getting everybody excited for some reading program, which kicks off on June twenty-seventh. Um, we'll have an event here, definitely something we're showing. So fingers crossed for good. I did like the animal hospital. So lots of great programs. Um, as you can see, read my report on that. Um, I do have to bring particular attention to that disco party, which was done in conjunction with uh town senior services, um senior projects, which is their sort of fundraising arm, money arm. And then Friends of the Library sponsored the snacks uh over there. So a great time was had by all. I think we'll continue to do this in the future. Those programs like that have been successful in the past and I think are continuing to be successful. So cheers. Um, lots of great programs. Just again, the the partnership with the Bethlehem Historical Association, uh the rail yard. We do um record those Bethlehem Historical Association programs and they are watched fairly well afterwards on YouTube. So we'll we'll keep doing that going in the future. Um, some outreach events this month. We went over to Paragon, actually had a request from a patron that someone should go over to Paragon. And I'm like, they're going over there today, like right now, presently, that is happening. So go into the room. So um Robert's doing that and uh it's always nice to go to our, you know, our local our local facilities and make sure they know who their librarian is. And we talk about the library. Um, some business in Bethlehem Children's School, Bethlehem High School, a nice tabling event. And um and over to St. Thomas. So we're we're really focusing on our connection with school age children uh this year to make sure that we're bringing them into the library, that they remember the library is here. And uh I think that that's working. So I think that's where much of our outreach attention is going to continue to go. Um, you know, why?
Or came home with a new library card from school, from the library.
Yeah, fantastic. I mean, the nice part about the the Bethlehem schools is that any kid that's in the school is automatically our patron. So we don't have to go through, we have to verify who they are, but we don't have to verify that they're an eligible patron. They are, they're in, they're in the school. So it's um, it's nice and it's a good, it's a good work back and forth. So thank you. It's nice to hear that. Thank you. So that's that outreach events. Um lots of cards. The, I just want to hit on uh Phil and his uh team of circulation. Now, you know, most of the visits are driven through the public services department. But the circulation team goes often in conjunction with them because of the technology that we have and the way that we can work our system now. We can do cards live there. So we can send someone from circulation who knows how to create the cards and can do them live onsite. It's uh takes a little longer. Then we can, we can get them all in advance. Then we can make up a bunch of them and bring them all there and just hand them out. But when we have to do them live at the on scene, we can do that. Frequently we go to high school and they can, they can fix card problems or that stuff there for the kids. Um, talking about these Tonys again, lots of checkouts, very popular. So we put uh you don't have younger kids. You may not know about these Tonys, but there's a box that comes with a little figurine on them and they either read stories or they sing. You know, it's tons. Okay, so um, so we have individual Tony figures now, the figures that go on the box. You circulate the boxes as part of the library things, but we also have the individual figures and we have them bagged up and they can get checked out. You cannot have to listen to the same song all the time. So that might be.
Are there any plans to buy more?
I mean, I think with the fact that they were, they were checked out like so, we had ninety-one of them. They were checked out a hundred and thirty times. Even less than a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
They're really popular.
Yes, so.
So are we getting more or?
Yeah, sure. We'll probably roll it over to the new fiscal year.
Is that popular or are we government of the curve or?
Um, Phil, that's a better question for you. Kind of like, how popular are they with other libraries? Are we the?
We know that Saratoga has a collection of ponies. Uh, they started circling individuals. But by knowledge of the library, you know, perhaps some of your phones. Okay, we really don't have it. UHLS comparison.
There's also an awful item called Yodo.
Okay.
Which is, which I know a lot of people use. I don't know if it's any more or less expensive.
Yes.
But it's cards in and out. It's opposed to figurines. So maybe I mean. I mean, it's like, it looks like a credit card.
A little box.
Yeah, it's a little box and it looks like a credit card and you put it in here.
Okay, same deal songs and stories.
Songs and stories. And and I think even older kids, like the idea of audio audiobooks, like even older kids, like listen to, let's say, the Harry Potter series.
Yeah, I mean, audiobooks for children is a really difficult thing right now. So one of our, we liked the the Readalongs became um the name of those, uh anyway, so they had that electronic book built right into the book, but one of the manufacturers stopped making it. So it's like that, that whole it's getting difficult to do that particular little.
This, I think this this device, all of it more than the Tony, is designed for children to listen to audiobooks without having to use a device that has a screen, right, which is where you post them. So maybe.
Fair enough. We got it. Thank you. Uh, lots of Tonys. Um just a little conversation, had a meeting uh that was organized by Albert Hudson, where they brought several of our local nonprofit groups that focus on people with disabilities. And they met with the libraries, talked about how we can best provide services, which is um what services can the library provide? And also just talk a little bit about um the timing. And I think that some of the libraries were feeling like they had a lot of people all at this in the time during certain points in the day. As it turns out, that's correct because there's, it's not a schedule per se, but there's just certain times of the day when um when the groups are able to visit the library and they can get transportation and come to the library. So sometimes they were having difficult setup of programming in the evening. It can be difficult for transportation. So it was a good conversation. We have a lot of whole contact list of all, not all of them. I'm sure there are a couple more, many of the agencies that um serve folks. Um, and then just the last thing that maybe many folks don't know, and there's going to be some press going out about this, I think around July. But the Hill, the Humanities Institute for Lifelong Learning, is now a committee of the Friends of Bethlehem. So um they are working on their web presence. We had a big meeting, our tech staff and um two groups about what those web presence should look like and are um our desire and, you know, willingness to have the web presence for those tubes managed by those groups as they become sophisticated and larger, our friends are getting bigger. So that's um exciting for us to see. Um, and you know, uh the Hill, for instance, was quote is is currently hosted on one of our servers. Uh, just their little website was just poking around on one of our web servers and that's going to move out toward rest.
Why did they leave the school district?
Well, this is the thing, and I don't want to get too far into this, but I'll, you know, we can talk about it a little bit. The, no, the Hill never existed as a it was a group of friends. Very passionate, very awesome friends, but they never existed as, so they're, the the school leadership handed their money when they were paying professors and collecting fees for people, but it wasn't uh they were never.
Never organized.
So now because the friends have the five oh one. So they they already exist as a five oh one C for Education Corporation. The Hill can be a committee of them and that five oh one can get served. Well, it's not the both those organizations, it's one organization. So um we're excited about the partnership. I've always, uh, you know, I always have admired the classes that Hill has put on and we're keep making sure that because Hill in particular has some um web, web uh registration functions that are important to Hill. They have to register for class online. So that's gonna, that's best not served in by the library's website. That's something that, you know, the money exchange needs to have not here. It never has been taken place at our server, but that needs to take place elsewhere. And that's what we're. Uh, and then just a little bit about the Albany County National Healthcare Consortium Cooperative that we talked about at last month's meeting. We had our first meeting with that group and we'll continue to investigate this throughout the summer. I've got a meeting set up with a union representative from the libraries union and their consultant and the men and top two trustees as well. So that's my work for the summers to get that figured. Um, you know, good increases in circulation. Always have to see the circulation go up again, largely based on increases of electronic circulation, which is nice. Um and other than that, fairly normal month. We're going to be shifting in June. It shifts over to studying and not uh you know, circulation will start to drop quickly in June and then it will spike back up for July as we get into summer.
Forty percent increase in visits to our homepage over last year?
Yeah, you can't believe that. I mean, I, so of all the numbers I have to report, I'm required to report website visits to the state. So we have a counter on our site. I don't hold any particular stock in that. I don't. Especially when it's a year over year. So we're comparing it to May of last year. I don't, I'm not buying. It's just, that's the counter. That's the number I have to report. But I don't have any I don't have much faith in as far as we have, we use it for oh, we had a bunch more web traffic this month for some reason. I don't, I'm not buying.
Just just so that we're clear that we have faith in the other numbers.
I do have a lot of faith in a lot of them because we control them. That's a thing. So it's, I mean.
Differentiate for the public is that that's a, an electronic counter. The others are things that you have.
Here's what I am a hundred percent sure. Many of the visits are from bots, from web ball, web crawling bots on our website. I cannot differentiate how many of those are actually human beings coming to visit our website and bots that are doing whatever it is that bots do.
And it counts from the homepage, right?
Yeah.
So I went to the homepage three times when I was getting ready for the meeting. Because I got ready on my, so I looked at the homepage and that, oh my gosh, went back to the homepage to do something else. So it's so that was one visit.
Yeah. Yeah. We got it.
And the bots do good things. The bots are looking for new, like to see if there's new information that keeps our, you know, when people search. That keeps us at the top of the list when they see, oh, there's new content, there's new information.
Right, would the state, I mean, so many of these numbers go right into our New York State report. Does the state want to know how many times Google and Bing and Ask Jeeves. So it's um crawl our website or do they, or do they want to know how many people are really using the site? It's just, I get an anomalous month every once in a while, so it's a lot of words to say, I get an anomalous month every once in a while. I'm not going to manipulate the numbers that it is, that's even right.
If you don't know the, you know, a hundred percent, four hundred percent increase in registered.
Yeah, that's a solid, right, and that's largely due to the fact that um the public services team and the tech services team were out issuing cards to kids and that's. You know, when we do those in batches, we get, we get a lot of, a lot of people out of time, a lot of kids getting cards, so. That's how we get them. That's it, any other questions?
Questions for Jeff, okay, moving on to, um, we, we meet last year before.
We don't meet in June, as you all know, because the annual celebrations aren't Wednesday and then we. Those people are not waiting, so um. We did uh select a couple of programs this year for um awards and in January we were on the. Public, the administration committee, so. Um I think it'll be a good program. An opportunity maybe, well, I'm not sure if Chris will be there.
Oh yeah, so Chris is, I mean, I believe that Chris is there. So Chris is, is, so it's the new executive director of Albert Hudson, he is in uh Crisagis, he is at work. Um and I, he intended to pray with us yesterday, but he, he sold last week, this is first, so he's on the job. And I'd expect him to be there unless there was some report pre-exist, so.
Okay, great, thank you. So moving into new business, the first order business is a request for reconsideration. To. In the panic of, so I apologize everyone, um but it's a reconsideration of uh. A case which we talked about a couple meetings here, well, it's been before, about a um. Request to withdraw a certain issue of the spotlight or a picture in that issue of the spotlight. Presentation, I'm not hearing, a little discussion, but uh they. Page here, the person has, has appealed to the board. Um Jeff's decision not to grant that. Withdraw, I guess I can call that, so um yeah. I could do that today. There's not really anything more I can say, but it's. Any discussion on that?
Did you make the spotlight in library news?
No, that is a, that is an option, so we um, you know. We're investing in options about how we handle this. These questions are not yearly, but they do come up frequently enough.
Yeah.
Right now, we've had, we've had two just together and that's a little bit unusual, but um you know, there are the. Reporting, how things are reported in the crime blotter, for instance, is not, this particular issue has nothing to do with crime, but. Uh the way that crimes are reported in the spotlight have changed, um. And. There is very little, so I'm sorry, so the quick request come every once in a while, people want their name or a picture or an article about something that happened. Years ago, taken out of the spotlight. Spotlight is to the best of our ability, put up uh on the web. Keyword searchable through Google and put up as PDFs, you know, so they're keyword searchable by Google and um. You know, and that's great, mostly they're used by. Geological research or they're looking for history, they're just interested in what's going on in the spotlight. They don't go up, certainly not in the first six months after the new spotlights are issued, so it's not about news, right? So when it's news, you, if it's within six months, you're going to go to the spotlight and talk to them about their audit. After a certain amount of time, they come to us and they are put on for the historical. And that's the purpose of uh. Purpose of the spotlight art, just to make sure that that's kept someplace and it contains a lot of the world's history. So um, given that, uh it's been the decision by multiple iterations of the, we do, we do not take out information. From the. At, at, but we wouldn't answer most of my patients. There is no, uh you talked to our attorney, there is no clear legal guidance on this. Um if we were to receive a court order. To take something out, we would obviously comply with uh with. But it's um, there's very little guidance, it's unlike in Europe, it's right to disappear, that is um. Awarded to people in the European Union, that does not exist in the United States. Traditionally, the United States has fallen on the freedom of speech, even when that speech can. So um, and I'm not saying that sometimes there could be a piece of information, that might be different. So someone was um arrested and not convicted, that's in there. Everybody's got the Google now, you can search it up and find it. So it's not a, um to, 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 to separate out the wrapper. Of this particular issue from the core issue, which is. Under what circumstances would this board. Want to disinclude some information that's in the public archive archive of the spot. In order to sort of make it uh different, I've looked at some different options about what we might do, one of the things that the library could theoretically do. Uh no plans to do this now, just caveat. But we could make it um restricted to people with a library. So like lots of other databases that we have, if you want to use the Times Union or search the New York Times, you have to. Any other geology databases, you have to enter a library card or be here in the library to use it. It's not available out to everybody who's out and available on the web. That's a thing that is possible. The question is, does the usefulness of the archives. Become less useful when we hide it and we put it behind some sort of um block to the outside, right? I think the answer is undoubtedly yes, but. That's counterweighted by the, you know, potential that could come from having some of this information. So that's, that's the decision that's in front of you tonight, um you know.
Well, the decision right here is just that specific.
Case.
Correct, yeah.
It, it springs a lot of, a lot of discussions, but before I suggest a particular request for.
Yeah.
I don't think we can touch, we, we provide a platform for the spotlight, but we're not going to own. The information in the spotlight, the information in the spotlight is in the paper copy of archive, which they probably have. In their offices. We're providing access to something that's archival, but somebody has owned, so I don't feel. That we can take, I appreciate her honesty, but I don't really feel that we have the authority or power to touch. Contents, they're not our contents.
Just wanted to refresh my memory as to. Was she only asking for the photo to be removed or?
The photo and then.
Content as well as.
The caption.
The caption, the name, kind of.
So. To the extent that the article made a reference. I don't recall.
It's just, it was literally just a picture and a caption. And the thing is, when the, when we converted the, the spot, the original paper spotlight archive, we had it, we sent it out at Microphone. At the time, scanning those photos in high resolution grayscale would have been extraordinarily expensive. Would it have been nice to have? It would have. They were scanned in just black and white, like it's the quality of a fax. That's when you try to fax a picture, that's the quality of the older spotlights. Until we started receiving the spotlights directly, authored digitally, and now we get the Adobe file directly, they have better quality.
And I believe too, it was a group picture, because the caption referenced the group. Uh all the members of the group.
And they obviously got permission when they put in the paper.
At the time.
Maybe.
It's news, right, it's news, right.
Yeah. So then we're voting on whether or not to uphold your.
My decision not to withdraw it.
I know that we, we not withdraw. The photo in the spotlight.
Okay, that's, okay, I was going to motion second.
A second plan. Meaning that we leave it stat, the status quo.
So, just, just to be clear, a yes voted on this motion means we're upholding Jeff's decision. Leave it set. Okay, thankfully discussion moved. Alors in favor, we see a five percent yes or a zero, and seeing the opposition that motion is carried. Okay, long range.
Okay, so I don't have anything in packet about this. Um. Just to share for a minute. So it's just, uh our long range plan is coming up to the end, at the end of June. So we need to work on a new long range plan. Um, just for ease, I've sent to you a shell of a new long range plan, some of the things that I think should be in there, but it is by no means. That is what our long range plan should look like. The, the long range plan is a document that is owned by the board trustees. So that is where you tell me what our goals for the library will be for the next five years or whatever time you decide to do your long range. Or typically for five. So um, you know, I've sent to you a report on mostly where we are on the existing long range plan. And then um some ideas for a new long range plan. What I want, the discussion I wanted to have tonight was, what process? Do you think would be easiest or best or how would you like to proceed with um developing a new long range plan at that end point? As quickly as possible.
So I mean, we need to come up with a process, right? We have, I think. So the policy committee has discovered or has found that writing a document. With everyone is a challenge, so I believe there should be one primary author. Just don't mean I'm volunteering to be that author, but there should be one, one primary author of that. Um I would say that as a starting point, that each board member should review the document that Jeff sent out and send. Comments regarding what should be added. Um. There should probably be some, I've, I've been saying either at the next board meeting. Probably the August board meeting, since we will have a new board member next time. Um, there should be a discussion on that and then I think we have to, then I think the sole author goes through. Authors, we bring a draft, we adjust. This means that I, I would not anticipate the document would be done until. I would say the end of the year. Is that, is that a problematic?
It's not problematic. What I might recommend is that. That's not surprising. So um if that's the case, what one, what you might do as a board is extend the current long range. Because there's, not everything on the long range plan is completed. So um might extend the current long range plan, give yourself to the end of December. Um or you know, whatever deadline, you want to set yourself in November, in December, set yourself a deadline and then um work on that in the meantime. We can, we'll, we'll review on that, but in the meantime, we'll continue to work on the aspects of the long range. Still there for us.
What, can I ask what the process was last time? Did it work well? Like, were, you know, were there pain points that we can avoid?
Well, that was, I mean, we were. We were very pandemic-y, so um uh it was, you can tell, it's actually, it's a pre, it's just pre-pandemic, so it's a pre-pandemic document.
Two twenty.
Yeah, it got voted in, it was.
Twenty twenty two.
Twenty twenty two, so that was a pandemic.
So then, if I recall correctly, there were not a lot of adjustments because we were coming out of. The pandemic, we were like, oh, we haven't.
Oh, we're just surviving, so like, hey, let's, what are we going to focus on then?
And then the one prior to it, we had Susan.
Yeah, you told them.
So I, I don't, I, I reviewed a lot of library long range plans from libraries that I admire. Um, we do not need to do this on hard. I think the important part is, think about what it is, um what are the important parts? There's room in this document for everybody to have a say. What is it that you feel um we should be doing with the organization of the next three to five years? Um you know, some, uh you know, the last one, we had a, a fo, a focus. Solution, uh. Certainly there are some aspects of that that should continue, but do we want to focus on sustainability, what are, or, or anything? Or uh what are the, what do we want to push for as an organization? That is where we, we put our focus, it frequently comes out of that process, looking very different because the, the realities change, but we. The core, the highlights that we're focusing on tend to see us break through. So.
So by next. When, when would you like comments from us, Joe? By next board meeting, or by the July board meeting?
Right, and I'll, I'll communicate with Jill about that as well.
Okay. And we'll put that as a discussion point on the agenda for next time, and maybe a point. Point person.
Yes.
I'm, I'm happy, I mean. I'm not going to volunteer right now, I'll be the next meeting, but I'd be happy to work on it.
This is important, when we, when we, um this, the documents that are produced by the board, this one's probably the most important. Again, it don't have to overcomplicate it, but it really does push, you know, when we talk about. Um you know, our report every year that goes out to the public and to the state, we're saying, you know, how are you responding to the needs of the community to do what? We have a lot of building stuff in there, we still will, we won't, we'll shift focus, whatever, that's all, that's all TBD, so.
Any other comments on that or questions, ideas, suggestions? I think I agree with Carolyn, that's a good question. Continue the current one for a while.
But we should say, let's set, understanding that it's not. You know, said, so I think everything needs a, a goal, a pencils down moment, um. Does a goal of the end of twenty twenty five seem reasonable to the board?
Okay, I'm a little confused. I thought we started out saying we do continue the long range plan, but then I thought we said by next meeting, we're going to have changes submitted.
Just comments, like just initial.
Initial comments, yeah. I think you can do it by November, December one. December one, December meeting.
Cause then in December it goes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Messed up, so.
So I think we're setting a goal, because then we could have to draft and probably two or three drafts presented to the board.
Yeah.
Um set an end goal of December first, or the December board meeting.
December board meeting, yeah.
I would be interested in the comments and hearing what people think about core library services. Cause I believe that if we're going to be looking at financial, any financial changes. The way to start at looking at those financial changes is deciding what, what our core services are. So that we can consider what we might be able to pair or change or whatever. As we move forward to look at the next financial year, so I would encourage people in their comments. To try to identify that. For example, books are clearly a core service. Right, reading books are clearly a core service. For me personally, providing internet at the swimming pool is not really a core library service. People might disagree with me about that, but I think that's a, a starting point to look at the budget as we move forward.
Yeah, I mean, and the realities of.
And very much use the wifi at the pool. Tom said, my, my sense, my sense of what's core may not be your sense, but I think that's a place to start.
I know.
Talking, yeah. Yeah. The tools they're opening, you can get your sense of.
Okay, that sounds good, so we have a.
Want to entertain a motion to extend the.
Sure, someone wants to make a motion to extend the current plan to December one. Hello, Michelle, Laura, second, always in favor, it's a five percent yes or a zero, any? Hey, that motion is carried.
Well, it seems silly to make that motion.
Okay, moving on to the investment policy, page twenty seven, twenty nine. Um.
So um. We had some conversations with a couple different people, this um particular program was brought to our attention by the town. Um. Way program works, it's um, it's through a bank called Metropolitan Commercial Bank. It's a deposit placement program, which means that. We give, make money funds and they will invest it, they have a lot of anticipating banks in the program. They will invest the funds up to the maximum FDIC limit, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in insurance coverage. Uh in multiple banks, let's say we give them a million dollars, they can put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in each of four banks. So the risk is, is spread out among four banks and all of our funds are covered. Um. We, I, I personally didn't know that this was a permitted investment um under the New York State general municipal law, but it is. Um so we've been in some conversations with the bank. So we've been in some conversations with the bank, and I think it's definitely something we should take advantage of. The interest rates are very competitive, and I think one of the things that is very attractive is that the funds are flexible. We can withdraw funds as needed, or we're not subject to, you know, a CD that's coming due in six months, and can't use those funds, especially as we're looking towards, you know, perhaps some building improvement projects, or we're gonna need some, you know, pretty precise chunks of money. There's no minimum balance, no limit on withdrawals. I, I don't really see any downside to it. We did have to, we do have to update our insurance, our investment policy to include this. It, it is a permissible investment, but we wanted to add it to the policy, so it's clear, and we're, we're adding our eyes and crossing our teeth. So the policy is up for your approval. The finance committee met, and we discussed it, and I think Michelle have some comments you want to add?
All I was gonna say was that, that we did meet, we did discuss this, and the finance committee recommends to the board these changes. And then, well, is there any discussion on it first?
Just to be clear, this, this makes it allowable as an option?
Yes.
It does not make it.
Right, it's just another option, just like we had the options of CDs, and treasury bills, and money market funds.
And I think it's another instance, Sheri. Another instance where Sheri has brought to our attention something we didn't know about before. It's another opportunity for the library to save and possibly make money. How do they make their money?
That's a good question, I'm not exactly sure, I do, I do have to have a conversation with them about that, but they probably take a fee. I, I'm assuming that the banks that participate in the program pay a fee to participate, it's probably a way.
I'm not gonna pretend like this is my area of strength, but, so like, right now, we've been investing in CDs. So we're thinking if we were to do this, we would do like a combination of both still, or I guess my real question is, when you invest in a CD, you're getting that interest rate with the term of CD, whereas these are more like a traditional account where the rate is gonna fluctuate, right?
The rate could fluctuate, and it's based on the federal rate. The rate that was given to me when we had the conversation was really good, that it was higher than what we're getting in CDs, it was like four point three percent, and we were getting four, about four percent in CDs.
And I think Sheri and Tanya are very much on top of when something needs to change, right? When the, the rates aren't as high, or going too low. And really, to put this in another way, it's just adding another option to the list of things that we can do.
Yeah. Right now, because, you know, we, we aren't at, at the point in the year where we have the greatest amount of funds. We won't be until September or October when we get the tax revenues. Ideally, it would be good to spread it around, you know, to give Metropolitan some, some of our funds, and maybe keep a CD, maybe we, we will continue to invest funds in TD Bank, which is our operating account, we need to make, maintain some money in our, in savings account to help keep the fees that they charge down. So we'll still have the opportunity to diversify. But the other thing about this is, the money's really diversified, if you're taking two hundred and fifty thousand and putting it in four, or five, or six different banks all across the country. And, you know, if the rates, if, if the feds reduce the rate, rates are gonna be down every month. I just think this is very competitive with everything else that's out.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the changes to our investment policy to include a deposit placement program.
Second bit?
Shell and Caroline, any further discussion? All is in favor, she's, both had a.
One question, sure. The reference in here, deposit placement programs, sort of, is generic. Are there more than one of these? Okay.
There are, so this is, you know, so the, the, the change, I'm sorry, Sheri.
No, it's okay.
That's what I meant.
Go ahead.
No, no, so the changes are, are noted in red, and that's what we didn't give two versions of, but policies, just the small language changes. What's going on in, in this policy, you're saying specifically, we're allowing Metropolitan Commercial Bank as an allowable institution.
Right.
That's one change. And then the other change are to allow these, the generic type of investments called deposit placement programs, and that's why they're listed down here under these. Now, there are more than these four are allowed under the genuine general municipal law. We don't use all of them. The board authorized of what's allowable under general, general municipal law for libraries and other governments to invest in, very conservatively invested, these are what's allowable. Of those, our board has chosen to say Sheri may avail herself of these types of four. And then the second control is at the institutions mentioned above.
When it's referenced in the text, it should be a lowercase, if it's not a defined term. So including pursuant to deposit placement program?
Okay. So I think Michelle seems open to a friendly amendment to, to uncapitalize these three words.
Sure.
That's a good one. Okay, any further questions or discussion on the motion by Michelle? Hey, all is in favor, she's a five percent saying yes, or any in her hand? To your opposition, that motion is carried. Okay, I think that's on the agenda is construction manager proposal, which we don't have today, so we'll skip that one. We'll talk about the boiler project in the whole business. So moving on to MC salaries, which is the.
Okay, so the management confidential, so MC just means management confidential. So the, the union staff, the salaries each year are dictated by the terms of the union contract that's voted in every year, or sorry, under the term, we have a five-year contract right now, so those increases are automatic under the terms of the contract. For the management confidential staff, they are not, they have to be approved by the trustees here each year before we go into the fiscal year. The increases that are, that I'm proposing are exactly the same as the increases that are being received by the union staff, both the percentage increase, the goal increase, which is stated in the union contract, up to five, and those staff that are not at the top step would receive a stepping base. So that's just.
And this is the top step, the thirteen?
Thirteen, that's, that's the steps that we have.
And this is what was reflected in the budget.
Correct, so we, we, I, when Sheri and I, Sheri was working with me to develop the budget, I report to her, well, she does it herself, but she knows what the expected increases are, there's nothing here that I'm proposing that would be out of line, or nothing that isn't directly.
Take a motion on the MC salaries?
We'll make that motion.
Okay, second. Any discussion on those? Okay, all is in favor of this schedule for MC salaries for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, please. Raise your hand or say aye. To your opposition, that motion is carried. So are there, anyone have other new business?
I have a small one, so I have, I had a request from a patron whose spouse had passed away, and was a fan of the library, lived here a lot, and asked that, was really interested in a bench, so you know, we have benches around the property, and they were placked. We were able to do two rounds of those in the past. I don't have any more pads or places for those right now, but I had a couple other suggestions that didn't really suit, I mean, I think there's, every, from time to time, I get a request for, specifically for a bench, and I just didn't know if that's something that we wanted to pursue, or be open to. We could look at the property and try to identify some spots where a bench might be located. You know, the alternative, what we're, what we're adding right now, which seems to be more popular with the public, are the metal picnic tables, with, with or without an umbrella on them, those are seeing a lot of use, and that's where we've been, we have our benches where they are, and we've been adding picnic tables, that doesn't seem to meet with the desire of the people that I'm talking to. There's something about the bench itself that seems a little bit more, more. And that's, you know, it's, it's, it's outside, fully outside of, it's not fully within my review, and I wanted to talk to you about it here tonight. Is that something we wanted to pursue, is it just a no? I mean, if it's no, then that's, if there's not room for more benches, if it's not something we're interested in pursuing, that's fine, then that's what I'll tell people. And I'll say, you know, we have these other alternatives, but this particular thing is a no. But I, I did want to bring it up, because it's, it comes up sometimes.
No, it's a lovely idea. I mean, the issue is that there is a finite amount of benches that can be on the property. It, it might be worth our time to develop, or to come up with a standard item that we can offer many of. I'm looking at the bricks in this room, like, it's still moving names. But I think that we need to maybe consider what can be offered in perpetuating.
Yeah.
So remind me, we were working on a, a series of policies. Well, this also, I'm working on this very issue at work as well. Like sponsorship and things like that, do, do we have, is that, did we finalize that?
Yeah.
Seems like a lifetime ago, it was. So is that, is like, our in memoriam, I don't remember, our in memoriam donations can consecrated in, or covered in that policy?
The amounts of what was named in the policy are like rooms, I mean, that's a much
Really higher.
Bigger, I think, than the folks that I'm talking, I have had no nibbles on those, believe me. I've had two nibbles that you guys know about, I've had those two, and really nothing else since. So these are much more in the amount, like, I don't want to put a dollar amount on it, but it's like that, it's smaller, it's not twenty five thousand, it's not fifty thousand dollars, not a hundred. It's, it's this other amount, and when the benches were put in originally, it was great, because we needed benches, right? That was, you know, when they did, after the renovation, it was like, here's your benches, these are great, this is a great opportunity. We were able to identify an additional round of those in two thousand eleven, two thousand ten, we put those in, and we really haven't had a conversation about it since then. I directed folks towards some picnic tables, and some of the other things that we've got, some people love, and others are not so interested, because I don't think it feels as permanent as a bench, to some.
Is there something that could be done by the tent where the concerts go on, or in that, in that area? Maybe, maybe not.
Maybe not.
I mean, when a bench has to be replaced, say, it breaks.
Right.
Is the person's name that's been on it replaced?
It's never happened.
How does that, I mean, is it, like, you get your name forever on a bench here, or?
That, I think, would have to be, would have to be dealt with.
Yeah.
But when this was done in two thousand three, all the way back when, it wasn't contemplated by the board and the director and everybody at the time, that wasn't, there wasn't a, you know, for the per, you know, for the next fifteen years, you get this bench. I do not think that that is the impression of the folks whose names are on those benches right now. That is, exactly, well, I can, so I can say, I don't know what to do about that, but I can tell you firmly, that is not the impression of the folks that I talk who currently have the benches, that's their bench in its state, and luckily, benches have been extreme enough. So.
Maybe it's a case of annually, we have a list of potentially in memoriam items. And the, or not necessarily in memoriam, but to honor items, and those are kind of the items that are for grabs at that time. So, I mean, on this year's list, it sounds like there might be a picnic table, or, or, you know, a bird. Trying to think of other items, you know, a bird bath, a bird feeder, some, something that the library, that it has a permanent nature to it, but is also something that the library needs.
Right, I mean, and, and Gail's not wrong, if, let's say, long range plan, one of the things that the library wanted to do was work with the friends on some sort of different kind of band shell, or band thing out on the green as a performance space. I think there would be a lot of opportunities for fundraising for that, right? So that might create a lot more of those opportunities, it's just right now, I don't have anything. And I just wanted to check the temperature here. My answer is mostly no, if you're looking for a bench, the answer is, I don't have a bench. So just wanted to.
Seems like there could be some, I mean, when you go to the concerts on the green, people bring it full in terms of, I've seen some seniors, you know, wrestle, there should be some sort of maybe ceiling somehow, I don't know. Might be a way to do something so that someone can come sit and watch the concert without, you know, a soccer chair.
Correct, and it's, and it's accessibility, well, we, whole different discussion, but accessibility of the grain, and I've had at least two formal plans to address that so far, and we could have another one. But then, this is something that the friends seem interested in fund, even funding already with the money that they have, and fundraising for. So there's a lot of possibility there, if that was a project that was identified.
I think the plan's for just that. Go put that area that's memorial, you put the plaque up on that wall with gift of a bench and whatever day, because what's important to the person who does it is partly the bench, but it's also having the name, and their contribution to the library would be prominent, I think, you know. I think that's one thing, I think you could suggest for this small gift, that maybe it'd be used as seed money for a larger project. So that if, if one of the things that you wanted to build a sensory garden, which I love that idea, you know, that you can suggest that that money be used as seed money for a larger project, and that that person's name be the lead, the lead name on the project. So, you know, like, when you give us a brick, if it's a certain amount of money, you get your name on, on the brick, and it's less, you don't. Or you can suggest that you make a plaque on the wall that says John Smith's family contributed five thousand dollars on his honor, and then as the need to replace a bench comes up, you request a bench with his name, and we'll make sure, and they pull some funds for that.
So.
You know, I think those, that's what comes to mind.
So tangentially related to the incident, bring it up here, because this is. And a patron recently donated one of the original shelves from, from the Adams Street uh, library, so that I intend to put where the shelves of support, like, things that look like a shelf. I intend to make it actually a shelf, and be one of those original shelves from the Adams Street library. We just, we basically have nothing, except for a few really terrible chairs from that, from that library. And then that might fill some of that need, like putting a book, maybe, I mean, something that actually looks like a book, so it's investigating that for me, like, what would be meaningful that can go up on that shelf?
Who was that old trustee that died, and then they had a, oh my God, I can't remember, it was a long time ago. Some trustee died, you know, like.
And we had the.
So he was on the board forever, and then.
The, the program series, you're talking about the.
Right, once, maybe they would be sponsoring the lecture series, or a fund for a lecture series, again, with that gentleman's John Smith. You know, the science fiction lecture series in honor of John Smith. Because sometimes people ask for things, and they just can't see what they're doing.
We'll have to, we'll have to check the policy, policy on here, we've been. We were leaving on lecture series. We were, there were some concerns, again, a lovely idea, but there was some concerns about patrons buying or directing content through donations that, that has a slip, a bit of a slippery slope to it.
Well, I understand what you're saying, it's just because in past practice, there have been some named lecture series out of this library, very past practice.
So for right now, what I'm hearing, and tell me if my impression is wrong, that it's like, basically, no one benches right now. We're looking at this, I'll go back and I'll suggest some alternatives with the tables, and some other things that I. We're looking at this, I'll go back and I'll suggest some alternatives with the tables and some other things that I would suggest, but I just wanted to have an answer for this person who wants to do something.
For the majority, that's correct, but I didn't get to see.
Okay.
I really like benches. I'm like, hey, find a place, but, um, and plus we're taking down that, uh, house potentially, there might be more property there where we could put a bench or table. Um, sometimes you can put a bench at the back of another bench, um, so that maybe could be a possibility. So, but I'm one of seven who are saying not to do it. So.
And it's just the risk.
Honestly not to do it. I'm just saying, he was saying this.
Yeah. It's just the risk of, eh, once you start saying yes to people, then how you start, how you start saying.
Well, and then I guess.
And when we, cause we shouldn't do anything that is not something we need or want.
And that's where I was gonna say is, is do, do we want to make like a little mini project? Look around the property, see if there are spaces, identify where those are, get the pads made. And then at least, then I can say to people, listen, I've got six, three, whatever, that's it. And when they're gone, they're gone. So that I just, I like to, I don't like to give people who are clearly breathing and interested, I just hate to give them a non-answer. So I, I, my, my answer was no, but I wanted to come and talk about it.
Sounds like an item for the long range plan.
Okay.
Of identifying things for in memoriam or for honor, honorariums of some kind. Because I think it is an issue that comes up, that doubles up every now and then. So there's certainly an interest in it.
And I don't, I don't like not having.
So we, we do have a policy.
Yes.
Yeah.
You will have to.
You'd like to go back and.
It does say the naming opportunities should be included specifically.
Yes, now they would be, right? And I think we would, anything going forward, we would be super clear.
Yep.
It's.
Again, though, I would like, so the policy is intended for larger.
Exactly.
For large ticket sponsorships.
Right.
Of some kind.
And, and that is one thing I'd say I was surprised, you did sort of mention a number a little bit. I would think a bench would be, it should be for fundraising purposes, it's a bigger ticket.
Yeah.
Um, that's what I'm gonna say. Policy may have been the intent, but it says it can be used for quickly or physical events. That's not necessarily large ticketing. So, so the policy is more general.
We got old nature.
I, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I mean, with intent, I'm just saying that I, I have a policy pulled up. Something to.
I'm clear enough, but we'll go and we'll take it up on, which seems like a good place to have that discussion. Thank you.
Um, any other new business?
I don't know if it's really new business, but, um, I guess, so based on some of the comments that were made earlier the beginning of the meeting and because I've been answering the emails now for a couple of months and at least two of the handful of emails that I got kind of questions about what's allowed during elections, who's responsible for being the party that makes sure that things are happening when they're supposed to happen. Right? Like who can put up yard signs, who can do whatever. Um, and I feel like I didn't really have a great clarity or good answer. I sort of directed people back to the school district or to the board of elections. So I guess I'm sort of asking now, who, who is the person, you know, like if someone does have a question about can these yard signs be here or, or whatever? Can people say what they're saying on social media? Like where do those, is that in it?
Well, there's more to this answer than you think. So, um, I've, I've, I've had some legal consultation in this. Um, as it turns out, our elections as part of the school district elections are explicitly excluded from being under the purview of the county board of elections. So the answer is a hundred percent not the county board of elections, right? It doesn't mean that election law doesn't apply to our elections. The school district has named a chief elections inspector and that person is responsible. Do you admit it, right? Uh, responsible for many of these aspects of the election. Um, also the commissioner of education. So when they are seeking guidance.
Well, no.
Feel free to jump in.
Education doesn't seem to be.
Uh, okay. So, so the, but the commissioner of education is the, is the, is the sort of, um, has that judicial role sometimes, um, for, for our school district election.
Okay. So just so, I'm gonna restate it so I'm clear. So basically the school district is running the election. So whoever the chief elections inspector is, is the person that is monitoring how the election is run and what is happening with it. And if there's questions, people should ask them. And then if they're not giving a satisfactory answer, it goes to the commissioner of education.
Right. And then ultimately you, the things can get handled in the courts, right? That's, there's always that remedy available. Um, that is available to citizens to, to, to do that. So I
Okay.
I've never, that, you're getting exactly to the end of the advice and guidance that I have. So.
Just to remind you to the public that, first I want to clarify something.
Thank you.
I understand that the board of elections does not have authority over this, however they are participating. I print not participating, they are printing the ballots. Am I correct?
They are coordinating because what they are, what they are actually doing is coordinating the delivery of the machines that the school district uses to run the election. And as part of that, they vet the ballot, which is then the school district pays directly to a printer to have printed up. But they do vet them to, um, not vetting the content of them, a little bit of the content to make sure it will scan through their machine. That's, that's the board of elections. They do this as a favor to the school districts. This isn't a requirement that the board of elections, so they're, uh, unlike some other elections, like your general election in the fall. They're not the people who oversee this election. They're involved, you're right.
They were, they're coordinating and to some extent they have taken on the responsibility by offering to provide working voting machines and.
No, the school district owns voting machines. The county doesn't, right?
No, no, they, no, no, they, these definitely come from the county.
Oh, do they come from the county?
Yes.
Yep. And print ballots. So I'm just saying that, that, that they do have a role. They're not completely out of it. I would also say, again, for the benefit of the public, I think Jeff has come up against this. Many of these are questions of somewhat first impression, as they say in the legal world, that let's just say there has not been a lot of litigation in New York state regarding library elections. So I think that, I think that the info, the information that our attorney provided makes sense to me, but I think that this is an emerging, I think an emerging area for everyone and also for the benefit of the public, I would like to remind them that, cause I know that calls were placed to all sorts of organizations in the town. The town has nothing to do with these elections. The Democratic Committee of Bethlehem has nothing to do with these elections. The Republican Committee of Bethlehem has nothing to do with running the elections. And the library board itself, nor does Jeff, the director, have anything to do with running these elections.
Thank you.
So just for when, if everyone, if they have an issue, should make a call, just a reminder that it is the, the appointed individual by the school district to whom we do so.
Now, I'll just add a couple of things. State education, I think, doesn't have a lot of clarity on its role in our elections. So I've tried to find that information from them and have not been very successful. Um, but one piece of feedback I heard, um, was kind of on some of the candidate information. I had someone, um, express some concerns with me with some of the information that was provided by a candidate that may have been unintentionally misleading. And so I wondered if in future years, and actually something of mine was just totally missing. I think I never answered the question. So it looks like I won't have a job in my, in my bio. So I'm wondering if for future years, there can be a, a form created for the candidate questionnaire or something. Um, so that we get the same information from every candidate, um, maybe also ask for years because you know, people are presenting themselves as current, you know, in current positions, maybe when they're not actually current position. So maybe, so it's trying to kind of standardize how candidates, and I know this is a little bit more work, but once you do it one time, it should be easy. Um, but maybe just try to standardize how we collect information from candidates, uh, including things like years of service. Just to be clear, what's current, what's past, um, just so that, yeah, again, you know, we want to make sure that the information that's on our website is accurate, even if it didn't come from the library.
Yeah, I just want to say definitively, none of that information is ours and we do not edit or correct or do any of that to those, to the candidate statements, nor should we. I mean, I guess the bigger question is the candidate statements were provided because basically there is no other place besides our website where people are going to find that information. Is that a thing that we ought to be doing anyway? Cause it does put us in a role that really isn't the library's role to be in. Um, I mean, the school district certainly does. They take their candidate profiles and they.
If I remember correctly, had minimal information on each candidate, like nothing. Cause I tried to find information of the candidates and they didn't have anything. So.
And, and that's it probably. I mean, I don't, I don't want to talk to their motivations of why they do what they do, but this is exactly to avoid, I mean, this is where.
They did have a meet the candidate forum and that was recorded.
Right, right. So that's, but that's, I mean, that, and that's very clearly, directly, um, to the, 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 where the candidates are making a statement. There it is. You can see it. It's recorded. Um, you know, I don't, I don't, wouldn't recommend stopping that. But before we had, I mean, so the reason we did a little pamphlet with the candidates and then we've been doing that for, ever since I came here, it's years. Um, the reason we did that was because their information isn't available anyplace else. The world has changed, information has changed.
I will say in the past, though, the League of Women Voters at one point did reach out to candidates to ask you to potentially fill out their information. They had it optional from what I understand, but, and it doesn't seem to be consistent. So.
Correct.
I don't know. So I, even at the time when I, I think both times I ran, they reached out to me, but I don't think they reached out to everyone.
The library has a disclaimer, doesn't it, on that page with the candidate biographies? That is the candidate's unedited answers. If not, you should just have to.
Yeah.
I think it's a service to the public to have the biographies there, truthfully, I know, you know.
I mean, the thing is with, with the internet, isn't the role of the life to be involved, I mean, I'm fundamentally uninterested in being involved in elections. That's not the role of the director. It's not the role of the organization. It's not what we do. So I think people do look to us for information and so that's the balance is, is, is how do we direct people the information they're looking for at the same time, um, absolutely ensure the organization's neutrality because that's our job. So, um, that, that's things to talk about as we move forward. So it's just, you know, so many years, I mean, I'm thinking about the years when I didn't have any candidates, no one ran. So we had open seats that were filled through writing ballots because no one, no one, no one. And for the seat, much more my normal experience than, than the past couple of years. So it's, um, you know, that, in those cases, I'm like, oh, hey.
Not, not to bang a drum here, but I mean, it, that might be another item on the long range plan because I'm thinking about, I mean, libraries, the library board is a very different place than it was five years ago in elections are. So I think maybe as a bullet point, something along the lines of ensuring library neutrality in elections is a long range and that's, that will likely involve working with the school district and, and encouraging them to take what is, has largely been a, I, I suspect a non-controversial kind of low-key role to maybe, um, you know, that, that might become a more involved role than it once was.
Is that, I mean, just to ask, I mean, is that the kind of thing that's appropriate in a services thing? Like, uh, to me, I thought the services thing was more about, and I'm just asking.
It's a long range plan. It's the long range. The question is, uh, clearly, we had, uh, Sarah was the recipient of many of these questions. Normally we have answers, but contact the commissioner of education seems to be the answer to many of these questions. And that was not perceived necessarily as satisfactory.
You can try to contact the commissioner. One event, the commissioner will contact you is the question.
Truthfully, it's a library of ownership. So asking the library and the board is a natural thing for people.
I don't blame, I totally understand.
But then I'm sitting here like, I don't really know the answer.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a natural thing to ask and I think that's why we might have to think about it is that library boards, not just ours, are being asked to take positions and
Right.
present information that they never have been before. And that is fine in some circumstances, but in cases like elections, neutrality is extremely important and I think it is something, might not be a cert, I agree with you that it's not a library services item, but from a long range standpoint of the board, I mean, we have to look at the world and say, some things have changed. How are we gonna deal with it?
Perhaps the board should have, um, should, there should be a separate mission statement for the board. Of course, I'm not, mission statement may be the wrong word, but a, a separate principle statement for the board rather than in the long range. It can be, it can, because it's part of the board and not part of the library.
Well, the long range plan is owned by the board.
It is.
It is, it is a board document and, and I agree with, I a hundred percent agree with you, Gail.
Well, you hear what I'm saying.
Yeah, that a mission, but I'm talking, I think that, that sometimes we have mission statements and then there's the brass tacks of how do you approach something when someone is in front of you asking a question? So there's the mission statement and then there's the operational, how to deal with it. And I think that that's something that we need to work on a little bit.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other new business? I have a, I have an item, but I'm gonna wait till the end. Um, any old business? We have nominated committee update.
Oh, well, I guess it's me too. Um, so I, I sent out an email, the nominating committee, which was Caroline and Jo and myself, we met. We came up with a slate of officers that we are putting forth for nomination. Went out that email and plus other people want to discuss it or have questions, comments or concerns, we'll present it in July, anything.
Okay. Great. Trustee training.
Okay. So, um, I talked to, to Gail, we investigated, uh, one of the avenues for trustee training is the American Library Association has some quite robust training for that. Um, and I was asked to look into the, uh, organizational membership for the American Library Association to join ALA and then the subsection, the United for Libraries, which is the subsection for trustees uh, on an organizational basis, about six hundred dollars a year with the library. From that comes the ability to purchase training that the board can take. It was definitely expressed to me that there was a desire to do things together collectively. Um, and they certainly have a lot of webinars available that could be done as a group physically together. So, um.
And we did talk about this during the agenda meeting and I, um, have personal experience with some ALA programming and I really love it. And then when Jeff said it's six hundred dollars on top of paying for the class, I was like, wow. It gave me pause.
That gives us United for Libraries.
Correct.
Right. So I went to the seminar and I'm trying to get a copy, which I can illegally share with people, I should say. Which I can find out by just sharing, uh, to the library meetings program. So they had a legal expert on who was talking about, um, how you have to approach public meeting content and how you approach, um, conversations about public meeting content. And among other things, she defined what was actually public space and what was actually private space and how you go about determining what is what. And that's a level of conversation that well, I think it was free to me because I am a member of the family, right? Um, but it was a very low cost. And it was information that we could not get elsewhere. So I hear what you're saying. So, you know, I would like to try it for a year, if it's not taken advantage of, but United for Libraries also has information about um, trip, um, friends of the libraries, it has information, it has free seminars about, um, public relations for libraries. It's, it's a very broad spectrum of what it, what it takes.
How much is it for individual groups?
Oh gosh, I don't know.
Year would be, well, that's always, I, if I give you prices, cause I'm a librarian, it's gonna be more expensive. Yours would be less as a trustee.
Yeah, I, I don't know. If somebody wants, I can just.
I can look that, I'll, I'll put that on.
Why is yours more expensive than the trustee's?
Because it's a membership organization. So if you're a, uh, an active librarian, that's, you're at the highest tier of individual membership. Nyla does the same thing. Like a trustee to join Nyla is twenty five dollars a year. For me to join Nyla individually is like two hundred and twenty five dollars.
And last year when I went to that. And last year when I went to that conference, it was very well with hometown, so.
Again, I would repeat that A L L, ALA content is excellent. Um, but we are talking about a two-hour program each year. That's what needs to.
Maybe we could as individuals look at how much it costs and so if we don't want to do that for our training, I mean, maybe it's worth us making it to individuals if we're willing to.
And you had also submit, sent some information that U H L S was offering.
Well, that's, that's my question. So when we talked about trustee training, I don't want to belabor this, but it was, do we want to pursue? I mean, we definitely said, I heard that we want to do it collectively together. I think that's a good idea because there's more discussions I have to do that. Whether it's a live or a, you know, recorded webinar, it doesn't matter as long as everybody's together. Um, for the live training, we can definitely, Upper Hudson has some stuff available for us and, um, they're getting their new director. So they asked us to take a little pause on that for a little while, but in the fall, that should get up and running. We could do it in the fall. Um, Nyla has some, some, some training that's also available. It's a, you know, local, a little bit more local. Um, and then then the ALA training, which wouldn't, probably would almost definitely not be an in-person training, would be a, either a live webinar or a, a recorded webinar, so.
But also going to the Nyla conference would count.
Absolutely. I mean, that you'd get way more than.
They don't do anything for us. I asked last time. I asked last time and Jeff said it pretty much.
Well, but you're ten, like I had to pay much of the classes. I mean, I just. And learn stuff.
Yeah, it's not focused on trustees. They did, they were developing that trustee day. Was Saturday was developing as a trustee day and that has been largely. Yeah.
I had, I mean, I think I had gone through the list.
I was over it.
And selected a few top ones. I think you agreed with them, so could we go ahead and, I think maybe two, like, because some of them were only an hour.
Right.
Maybe there's two, I think.
So it was the ALA training that we have to have either.
It wasn't ALA.
I think it was Upper Hudson.
This was Upper Hudson. I think I went to Upper Hudson.
We're put together very good potential.
Yeah.
All right. So for this year, we'll pursue Upper Hudson's one.
Yes.
Okay, and then we can talk. Great.
Okay, building committee update.
Okay, just gonna say that we're, uh, uh, having a conversation with CJ from Schoolhouse about, um, you know, what would be entailed with construction, uh, construction management services for the boiler project. The boiler project is obviously much smaller. Um, it's a small, very contained project and he's going to come back with us at some point in the next week or so, certainly a time to consider for the July meeting. A couple of different proposals, one's a little bit more hands-on, one, uh, mostly focused on the bidding and other financial aspects of the project. And he's gonna, he'll have those back for us to consider, but he's developing those right now, so it's not here. But in the meantime, uh, they had first walked through from CS Arch, came in, um, looked at the boiler, talked about some potential, uh, to make sure they had, uh, you know, our current design, um, well in hand and they're working on that project and we'll, we'll be hearing back from them with all their initial design ideas and for you to consider.
Okay, anything else?
Not for the building committee, no.
Okay, board engagement?
Oh, right. So I have, uh, Kristen developed, um, a board survey, which was based on Laura's suggestions that came out of the last meeting. That could go out. Uh, this is what it looks like basically. It said, how would you, trustees want to hear from you? How would you want to connect with board members? So we've got these, these choices which were, um, discussed last time. And then the question was, you know, which handle do you live in if those, um, you know, the handles inside the district are here? So. So that's thing that exists, but we could do other questions. We could change the answers. We can do whatever, but it's.
So, um, yeah, we could set it up to, for like a certain timeframe and then at the end the Patreon point software just, um, puts it all out to an Excel spreadsheet. So it's pretty easy to go up. I hadn't heard anything on like any other feedback on that. So if you wanted to look at it.
I can send the link out to you, everybody.
We can, yeah, we can talk about, you know, like all of Laura's ideas and the different places we could put that out.
So this would be on the weekly newsletter, on the website, on all the patrons, like how, like how we distribute even survey? What's the goal?
Don't have the list in front of me, but yeah, social media, um, just kind of all of our, just hit all of our outlets. It'll be on, we can even put it on the website. You could have, and I, like where we have the, um, brackets of voting, you could do an in-person paper one as well.
I'll just reiterate my
Yeah.
own opinion that we have surveyed the public in the past many, many times. Specifically, our most recent building project did not, it did not work in our favor. Um, I'm not so sure that this survey is really going to help us in the way that I assume we're, we're trying to. Um, if, if you have a, a majority of people, for example, choose social media and then it comes to, say, another building project and a large part of people who might vote against a building project aren't on social media, then we have a problem again because we've, we've trusted in a survey that didn't really give information that represents everyone. It only represents the people for the survey or on the survey.
But it also misses all people who don't use email or.
No, we're gonna have it if, if we have it right in the building or also.
The people who come into the building.
The newsletter.
I, I.
QR code in the newsletter, right? Like you do something like that.
You know, there's a reason that people from Glenmont don't come to the library and I even see them filling in the survey. Whether if it's paper in the library.
So how do you suggest we reach folks in Glenmont? Because I feel like if they get an email, they get the newsletter. There's, there's definitely more ways. I mean, I think the attempt is to get to them, to get to everyone in this district in all the ways that they might interact with the library, you know? The website too, like, so is there some other way, like an ad in the spotlight? I don't know. Is there some other way that those residents might be inclined to take a survey that, that isn't through our normal communications vehicles?
No, Michelle, I understand your point. I agree with you. Surveys are not surface-willed in the past, but I think we're making efforts to diversify this one. But I guess the, my question is, what, what is the alternative? Is we just make a decision on how we're going to outreach to the public? I mean, based on no information? Is that, I, I agree with you that these are imperfect things, but at some point, like short of knocking on everyone's door, this is the best method that we have and it is to some extent incumbent upon citizens to participate. Exactly.
I don't think if some, if everyone picks social media, I don't think that we're saying that, that's all we're gonna do. We're never gonna do anything. But I think this is just a chance for people to tell us maybe something that we don't like, maybe we'll learn something, you know? Maybe we'll learn that, uh, people in Glenmont want us to come to in-person events in their neighborhood. So I think it's, it's more what can we learn from it? Not to say that it's going to exclude us, uh, prevent us from doing other things. It's just, it's a, it's a, it's another tool to allow engagement from the public. It isn't the only tool and we're, I don't think we're going to make policy decisions necessarily based on, based on the results. It's just, it's just a tool, I think.
Your point is well taken, though. I think I agree with Laura that this is a tool in the toolbox, but also that can't hang our hat on the results of this. We, but it is potentially an opportunity for information.
And to answer your question, um, the only thing you asked, well, what else would we do? The only thing here we don't already do is informal time in person prior to board meetings. Otherwise, we already do all of these things. So having someone say, we want you to do all of these things is repetitive.
Well, the board, the board does not do in-person and accidentary. We don't do that. I mean, we, I mean, maybe we do some, maybe some of us go to a parade or something, but you know, that's, that's something we don't.
Well, we definitely do the parade. We do thing at the park. We do the Halloween party. Um, I think that, that's, there's actually several opportunities close here.
But I don't think those are, I don't think those are opportunities for people to talk with us, right? Like I, not necessarily. Those are families taking their kids through vast things. Yeah, I, I have a different idea in mind what that might be, like, maybe that's not what people taking the survey would think. Um, but there's the other, uh.
I think this is a bad time of year to be doing a survey between graduations, people getting ready for summer camp. I would, I would prefer to do this more towards the beginning of the school year when people are gearing up to do things at home because every weekend from now until whenever, you know, till July is filled up with people in the yard, kindergarten graduations, high school graduations, and all this stuff. This is just a really busy time of the year. So I don't think we would get the response that Laura is hoping we would get if we put a survey out. Right now, I tend to agree with Michelle and everything that I would do is I would engage the staff who is going to the farmer's market to push a survey for people to fill out because the people from Glenmont go to the farmer's market. So, you know, you know, I was thinking about Girl Scout cookies and how the kids are in front of, but I just think right now at this time of year, if people saw this, they'd say, I'll do it later and then it would disappear in there.
In all fairness, I'm not sure September is much better or tougher for this.
I have a kid graduating. I can answer.
I mean, I, 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 I think, I think that if we go through, there's never a good time of year. So you just have to. I mean, we could go through the year and find out why that time of the year is called someone. So I just think that you have to kind of, if we're gonna do it, do it.
Well, well, so I've never answered a survey in my life. I'm that person. I don't want to answer a survey, but we recently sent out a survey at work and I was also like, this is the wrong time. It's the end of the semester. No one is going to respond to this and like we got like an overwhelming amount of responses, so. I don't think we can prejudge anything like that. Personally, I think we might as well just go ahead and send it. It doesn't hurt anything. I think this is kind of what you're saying. We'll get the information back. We don't have to follow it like it's the gospel, like, oh, well, we got fifty responses and forty-nine of them said social media, so that's all we're doing, you know, like, we can use what we get back logically and understand that that's not a mandate for social media necessarily, but it doesn't hurt to try it, to send it out and see what happens.
Well, it doesn't hurt, but it is time and effort, um, library employee time and effort.
Yeah. So is the goal to get people that are engaged with the library to tell us how they want to connect or to get people across the whole community? Some of them only came here to vote no on the, on the, on the bond. I mean, because if we're gonna try to get people, like the whole community, all the community to, to engage in the library, we have to do something different. We have to do something completely different then. And I'm not sure what the goal is here.
I feel like there's two goals and possibly I'm wrong, but like on the one hand, we have this bucket of people who clearly didn't want the bond and communicated that by the vote. But we had no previous communication from them clearly. So we need to find those people. So if we're gonna have another bond, we know what they might want or what they're willing to accept. Then, then I think there's a secondary issue here is that people come and speak at the beginning or the end of the board meeting and because of parliamentary procedure or whatever, we can't interact with that because that's not what the board meeting is about. So we were hoping to find a way so that we could interact with those people more, like actually interact with them. When they have feedback, we could say something back, right? And not just have to continue with the meeting. So I feel like there's two things that we're trying to do.
I just need to point out that our budget passed by seventy percent. And truthfully, I think there was a really, really good anti-bond campaign, but I don't think it indicates what our community thinks of the library. Our budget passed resoundingly
Yeah.
with people in this community. So I'm kind of done with hearing about people who hate us.
It, it did pass resonantly and there's a great cushion there, but it was not nearly at our highest point.
The budget passing?
Yes, it was nearly at our highest potential. It was down, Jeff, don't, I don't want to be dishonest. I don't want to.
No, that's a hundred percent.
No, you're right. We got, we, my goal is always to be eighty and we got to eighty, um, you know, a couple of years, but.
And as recently as
Right.
if you within the last two years. So that's down ten percent.
Three years ago, yeah. But I mean, it's still overhounding, yes. I mean, you know, eighty is crazy. It's great.
Less people voted. I looked at the numbers. I think most people thought it was a mu, in a budget turnout, it was much less.
Yeah, I mean, the question, so my question though is, are we gonna try, I mean, we are out, we are available. We have ways people can communicate with us. And we do a lot of things that office hours were somewhat of a bust in my mind, but that's okay. We're trying.
I am answering the email now to some of.
You are answering the email, which is great. Um, but, but, um, if we're trying to get to people who aren't engaged in the library, we have to really think about how to do that. Because if we do that through library website, the, the, uh, people have library cards, you know, people that come in, we're like, oh, you're getting, you're getting that. You're not getting the people who, you know, have come here once, twice. So, I mean, I'm all for this. I think it's fine. I'm, I'd be, I'm, I'm with Michelle. We gotta be very careful how we use the data. Um, but, you know, more data is great. I think it's, it doesn't hurt, doesn't hurt anything.
I'm gonna take a page from Caroline and say it sounds like long-term planning to me. If you're talking about getting more people to engage and come to the library, which I don't think that's what that says. That's addressing people's comments that we aren't available or responsive or whatever the questions and issues were primarily during the bond.
Yeah.
So, um, but also during some of the other program issues.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think this has been something that we've heard. Um, and I understand the need for, you know, gathering some data from folks, but like, at the end of the day, it's what the board wants to do and put themselves out to do.
I like the idea of having a regular board communication that we kind of started, maybe in the newsletter, maybe every so often. I'm hearing from people that they don't feel that the library is safe for them to be. And so I think we could be communicating more routinely with people. Because that bothers me.
So you would like to see in the newsletter, like a question and answer section?
Well, it could be a question. Let me do an analogy. If you have a brand new program, sometimes you only have ten people come. But if you have the same program routinely, then over time, the attendance and the attention to it can grow. So I tend to be with Michelle about the survey, but I don't really care that much. But I also think that Caroline worked really hard. We all worked really hard to put up that piece that was on the trustees page and that we could briefly, like three paragraphs, send out something routinely in our communication that we already have that says from the trustees, this is what we've done or, or we're hoping to plan blah, 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 whatever we want to put in it, but to, rather than asking people to come reaching out in a different way to people. Um, and it doesn't have to be every newsletter. It could be quarterly. It could be a quarterly thing, but something that's, that's a statement and then a, a communication directly from outside and from the library.
I know. I understand now what you were saying, um, but when, when I thought you were talking about a question and answer in the newsletter, I thought that's really.
Well, we can do that. We can make it anything we want to make it, I think.
Because some of the questions we get, I think, are questions more than one person has. And, um, and we've crafted responses and then maybe that's a good idea to put that out there. And then people start seeing, they think to themselves, oh, we can submit this question to the board and then they'll put our answer in the, in the newsletter.
So, okay. Gail, I want to go back to something you said because if, if I heard it correctly, it's a, I just want to make sure. It's, it's a big statement to make. If you're saying, you said, you're saying that people are telling you that they don't feel safe in the library. Is that a discussion that we need to have among the board? That, that is not, I just want to be clear, that's a small statement.
It's not, it's not, it is, it's a true statement. It's not a statement I'm prepared to discuss tonight, but I'm happy to discuss it further.
Okay, but I.
My response has been, of course you're safe in the library.
Okay, but I, you've now said it. Okay, but I, you've now said it at a public meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And I want to make sure that we might, even if we don't discuss it at this moment, if, if that is a statement that you're making publicly, that does need to be discussed with the board as a whole.
Right this minute?
In general, I, I just said not this minute, but it does need to be discussed with the board as a whole if you're going to make that statement.
In general, there's been controversies at the library over the past few years, not just, not just a program, an external program controversy, but also some internal program controversies and people who have had um, have felt that those positions that have happened in the library have made them feel like the library is no longer a place that they feel that they can step in comfortably. And that is a concern, that is a concern. Um. My response to that is quite honestly, that's nonsense, of course the library is, is a safe place for you. And I can substantiate that by what I have seen as a board trustee having office hours as the diversity of people who come in and use the library at any given time, and maybe that's something we would talk about. Maybe that's something we would talk about in a direct communication, but, um, so, so I can't stop how people feel, but I have certainly tried to tell them that it's not correct and not true. If that's what you're asking, it's absolutely not true, this library is a safe place to be in and it protects everybody who's here.
Okay, so, um,
The survey.
Let's go back to this. Uh, I guess I'm looking for a motion or consensus on, do we want, uh, engaging in a survey exercise? Um, do we want to vote on that now, or do we want to talk more about it? What do people want to do?
Can I just ask one, so Kristen, the amount of effort from here on out for you to like include this and things, like how much time will it take for you to put this out and collate the information?
So I actually was just going to, I'm leaving on vacation tomorrow, so I'm gonna be out probably until the twentieth, which is a Friday. So, I mean, I can't really do anything until maybe the last week of, of July, and if you want to do it, please do it.
Yeah.
Do, do, do.
That'd be awesome, basically.
Yeah, I was like, what's the occasion, yeah, it's like, cool.
Um, so.
Well, I'm more, so asking, cause I feel like we should just send it, cause it doesn't hurt anything, but Michelle's concern was that it was gonna take personnel time. And so, like, it is absolutely fine, you send it whenever you like, but is it gonna take one hour of your work time or ten hours of your work time or how much?
Time to the one hour.
One hour.
Yeah.
I mean, so then I personally feel like it doesn't hurt to send it and if it's maybe one hour of work, I feel okay about that to get the information.
And so is that including as, uh, now I don't remember who suggested putting it in a table out there? Um, hard copies at a table out there, uh, email newsletter?
So, but one One to two hours, all the digital stuff, it's, it's gonna go out and things that I, I, you know, I'm already, it's part of the churn, so like the e-newsletter, you know, that, the amount of time that it takes to do that, that, this doesn't affect, um, the physical copies, yes, and like a social media posts, a little bit more, but it, it isn't, it isn't a heavy lift.
And then tabulating results?
Oh, it does it, it does it automatically, the software does it.
Well, again, except for the, the hard copies.
Oh.
Um, yeah, and
I like the farmer's market. I don't know, we, we have the farmer's market, right?
Not in the, no.
Also, I make a motion that we go ahead and send out survey.
Okay, so Laura's second for the discussion. Any others favors who might be saying yes? Any opposed? Sentions, any motion passes?
They're okay about it, it's not, still being yes.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, no, there's not, I mean. So I have, uh, one more, um, piece of business, which is bittersweet actually for me. Um, I have a resolution in front of me honoring, uh, Lisa Schoons for her ten years of service on the Bethlehem Public Library Board of Trustees. Um, I'll read the resolution and I'll ask for a second and adoption. Whereas the Bethlehem Public Library within its charter maintains the power and authority to adopt such ordinances and resolutions as it deems proper in the exercise of its powers. And whereas Bethlehem Public Library has been grateful for the service of Lisa Schoons as library trustee for the past ten years. And whereas Ms. Schoons has served as trustee on the Bethlehem Public Library Board of Trustees through two terms of five years each and through her work on the Upper Hudson Library System Board has strengthened the library's understanding of a number of complex issues libraries are facing system-wide. And whereas Ms. Schoons intends to step down from the Bethlehem Public Library, uh, Board of Trustees after ten years of service. And whereas Bethlehem Public Library desires to recognize, honor and thank Ms. Schoons for her dedication, professionalism and hard work towards the betterment of the library. Now therefore be it resolved that Bethlehem Library extends its, uh, heartfelt appreciation and best wishes to, to Ms. Lisa Schoons. She has admirably served the library as trustee and U H L S lays on among her, uh, her many contributions. Be it finally resolved that the resolution shall be entered into the Bethlehem Public Library minutes and a certified copy containing the library seal be given to Ms. Schoons as evidence of Bethlehem Public Library's admiration and gratitude for her service, so I give you this, you can take this, and then we also have, um, we have a card for you here too.
So.
You?
I need a second on that.
I have a second.
Okay, resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, I just want to take a, a minute of personal, uh, privilege, I've known Lisa since the nineties, actually since the nineties, believe it or not, a long time, uh, we worked in the senate together. Uh, well, way a long time ago and I really appreciated your, um, your service on the board, you've always been a, uh, like, a, uh, a voice of, uh, reason in times when we needed it, so I just want to thank you for serving for ten years, it's a, it's a great contribution to the community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're gonna miss us, isn't it?
Yes.
Of course.
It was a long pause.
And Lisa from the staff, we want to send you this, uh, special library.
I do library.
Just, same number.
I want to remember the, I don't have the other one, actually. In my personal, so, thank you everyone, it's been my honor to serve with you guys.
Thanks, Lisa.
Us too, I, I remember early days when you would sit next to me, you would literally, I will mean, say it, say it.
I don't have that problem anymore.
So, see, all the good work that you did.
Yes.
Okay, any other business on the board, um, any future business, are going to public participation, any public participation? Okay, now I'll take a motion for adjournment.
All right.
Sure.
Uh, Barbara, Barbara from Donald, uh, one of the things you talked about tonight was, uh, revising the, uh, long-range services plan, and I would suggest that might be an opportunity for community engagement. Uh, for instance, you get all the special meeting, uh, of the trustees, invite the public, uh, uh, provide the services plan as it exists and seek the public interest. Uh, that might, considering, in doing that, that might be one way to, uh, to improve our trustee engagement.
Thanks, it's very good.
And, um, actually before we adjourn, we, we had some discussion about a possible executive session, I mean, after
Yeah, so, um, I was gonna get a public participation and then I would like to make a motion to move into executive session for purposes of discussing, uh, the compensation of an employee. Um.
Second.
Second, all in favors, I guess, okay.